People. Sherman here. Let's see. Ruben Sherman, fifteen years at the jail. Make sure that they get that. We have Janet Sayer. Janet Depew. She is ten years with us. We appreciate her services. And the one that didn't make it is Michelle Jerome. Twenty-five years. Thank you for your services. We appreciate it very much. Great job.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number one.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the August fourteenth.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren. Send my question on through the minutes of the August fourteenth meeting. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. So carry. Item number two.
Make a motion to recess the commissioners meeting. Open the salary board. It's still at nine oh one.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Salary board. All present? Motion to approve the minutes of the August fourteenth. Do I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the August fourteenth. Salary board meeting. I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Arnold. Send my commissioner Warren to approve the minutes of the August fourteenth, twenty nineteen meeting. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number two.
Make a motion to approve item number two is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren. Send my commissioner Arnold to approve item two on the agenda. For the part-time union health position of telecommunicator. Effective August twenty eighth. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. So carry. Any public comment on the salary board? Hearing none?
I make a motion to close salary board and return to the commissioners meeting.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
So carry. You're back for commissioners. Treasure, have a wonderful day.
Good as well.
Nine oh two. I make a motion to approve item number three is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren. Send my commissioner to approve item three. Ratifying approval of cash disbursements, electronic payments. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
So carry. Item four.
Make a motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren. Send my commissioner Arnold to approve item four on the agenda. Ratifying approval of the following seminar request. Annual payment for seminar requests associated. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So carry. Item five.
Make a motion to approve item number five is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren. Send my commissioner to approve item five on the agenda. Ratifying approval of the termination of Cassandra Patterson from the part-time position of corrections officer. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item six.
Make a motion to approve item number six is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren. Send my commissioner Arnold to approve item six on the agenda. Ratifying approval of the termination of Troy Anderson from the position of full-time telecommunicator one. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. So carry. Item number seven.
I make a motion to approve item number seven.
Second that.
Question by Commissioner Arnold. Send my commissioner Warren to approve item seven except for the resignation of... Except with regret, it should say. I understand. But we're still losing. Except with regret, the resignation of John Nagy from the full-time position of telecommunicator. Are you both okay with the change?
Yes.
Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number eight.
I'll make a motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren. Send my commissioner Arnold to approve item eight. To approve the hiring of John Nagy to the open part-time position. Union health position of telecommunicator. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. So carry. Item number nine.
I'll make a motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren. Send my commissioner Arnold to approve item nine on the agenda. Ratifying approval of the hiring of Michael Sasko of Forest City, the open union health position of telecommunicator. Questions or comments? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number ten.
I'll make a motion to approve entering into the fiscal year nineteen twenty agreements with the Lackey-Monas-Susquehanna Behavioral Health Intellectual Disability Early Intervention Program.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Warren. Send my commissioner Arnold to approve the entering into the twenty nineteen twenty twenty agreement for the Lackey-Monas-Susquehanna Behavioral Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program. Questions or comments? Yes.
I just want a clarification that these are programs that are available to residents of the county but not necessarily always used, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. At this time, we have a presentation by the Susquehanna County Substance Use and Recovery Initiative by Barbara Durkin. Barbara?
Would you like me to stand? Please.
Please.
Hi, I'm Barbara Durkin. I am the director of the Drug and Alcohol Program here in Susquehanna County. And I'm pleased to present the findings and recommendations that came out of our formerly titled Substance Abuse Recovery Initiative, which is now entitled Susquehanna Substance Use Recovery Initiative. So we changed the name from Suri to Suri, and I believe that was agreed upon at the last commissioners meeting. The reason that we started the Suri approximately a year ago was we were hearing from residents of the county that there were individuals who were struggling with substance use disorders who were not able to access services. And we wanted to sit down and talk about how we can assist residents of the county with accessing services. This was something that the Board of Commissioners was incredibly interested in. Commissioner Warren, Commissioner Hall, and Commissioner Arnold were all very supportive of the initiative. And we met on a regular basis. We met monthly for approximately a year. We had representation from, obviously, the Susquehanna County Commissioners, from the providers here within the county. We had representation from children and youth, representation from Mary Ann Kolberg, who is the acting administrator for the Behavioral Health Program. We had representation from Friendship House, advocacy alliance, grant counseling center, as well as most of the school districts within the county. We met, as I mentioned, regularly to talk about some barriers that not only adults and families had with accessing substance use disorder services, but barriers that students were having with accessing services. We came up with some recommendations which have been presented to the Board of Commissioners. One of which was, how can we work best with the criminal justice system to ensure that those individuals who are either incarcerated or who've become involved in the criminal justice system because of their addiction are able to access services? So we've made a point to work with the jail and with the criminal justice system to ensure that there's communication, that there's access to assessments, there's access to treatment, there's access to funding for individuals who are in need of treatment, and that that can be a smooth transition. We discovered through our regular meetings that there are... There are a vast number of services here within Susquehanna County. The challenge, I think, has been that residents of the county have not known how to access those services. They've not known who to call. They've not known what to do if a family member has insurance, or if a family member does not have insurance. So we have... My office relies on Tree Have, which is the drug and alcohol provider here, and they're also the provider that has opened the Community Resource Center here in Montrose. They also have an office up in Susquehanna. So they have two offices for individuals who are struggling with addiction. We utilize them for our after-hours work. So if you have a family member or you know someone who's struggling with addiction, you can simply call Tree Have's number, and I can make this document available to everyone. I did some editing of it based on the original document. But it does include Tree Have's after-hours number. Pull up right now so that you all have it. It is five seven zero two seven eight three 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 eight. And that is Tree Have's number. That is a number that is available twenty-four seven for any resident of the county who either simply wants to talk to someone after hours about their addiction or needs to immediately access services. So we've made sure that we are putting the message out there that regardless of funding, regardless of time of day, you or a family member can immediately access services for your addiction. And that includes any drug of choice. It's not just specific to someone struggling with an opioid use disorder. And there's ample funding for treatment at this point that should never be an issue. And that was, I think, one of the main priorities of the Suri was to get the word out there that services are available. We did have a community meeting back in May at Mountain View. Unfortunately, it wasn't as well attended as I think we would have liked, but the presentations were fantastic. We had representation from the school districts. We had Mountain View and Blue Ridge who were there speaking about their school resource officers and how useful that has been to not only their administration but their students. And then we had multiple presentations about services that are available in the county. We also plan for September and moving forward to do some small-scale community meetings in some of the local townships and boroughs. At this point, we have one scheduled for September third in Forest City. That's where we're going to start, simply because they were the first to respond to our telephone call. So we could plan to continue to reach out to all the townships and the boroughs in the county, do small-scale meetings at the same time as their council or township meetings, and then just present the information that we have from the Suri. And we hope that we can continue to do that to get the word out about resources. We also plan to partner with the school districts within the county to do a logo and a poster contest. We rebranded with a new name, and we realized that we probably need a logo, so that when we're getting materials out into the community, it's branded with our logo, which we think is really important. So we're going to work with the elementary schools and the high school students to do not only a logo contest, ask them to create a logo, and then we will set up a panel of judges, and we will pick a winner. And then we will work with the high schools and the elementary students to do a poster contest. So the way we're envisioning it at this point, and we're going to release a press release shortly, because school has basically just started, so it's the right time to do it, we're going to have the high school students do the logo contest, and then the poster contest we'll have the elementary students do. Our plan is to pick a grade winner, per grade, and then, as mentioned, we'll do the judging. And then we hope to have billboards that will display the winners. The logo billboard, we're thinking we may do in Montrose. But then the posters, we're probably going to do by month. We'll pick a month, and then whoever the winner is, depending on what school district they're... They belong to, we'll do a billboard in their school district. And then we hope to do some sort of reception, probably in late fall, where we recognize all the schools and all the work that they and the students have put together on this. And the goal is really getting the word out there about recovery being possible and making sure that individuals, not only parents, students, individuals involved in the school districts, but everyone in the community knows how to access services. So part of it will be, you know, having whatever the logo is that's created with the help of the schools, but having the contact information for after-hours calls should someone need treatment and be struggling. So that's kind of all I have in terms of a presentation. I don't know, Commissioner Warren, if you have any additional thoughts, or if anyone has any questions.
No, I just want to say that I was pleased with the participation throughout the county, especially with the school districts. And the good things that the SROs are doing in the school districts was brought back because that has a big effect on children's lives. So I thank the other two commissioners and the district attorney's office for having those SROs in the schools. I think we have one more school to get on board, which is Montrose, and hopefully they'll be on board soon. And I think that involving the schools and the children will be a great... Have a great impact on their future of keeping them away from drugs also. Thank you.
Yes, you have a question?
Yeah. Do you read... Do you send counselors into the classrooms to talk about the dangers of drug addiction? And are they people who have struggled with it and overcome it?
So for our prevention services that we do within the schools in Susquehanna County, we contract with Tree Have. They have prevention specialists that go into all the schools within the county. At least one of their prevention specialists is actually... Actually, two of them are people in recovery themselves. So they have an actual curriculum that they speak on. They do Too Good For Drugs and Life Skills, which are two evidence-based prevention programs that we're allowed to bring to the school districts. So school districts are required to have drug and alcohol prevention programming, but it has to be evidence-based. And unfortunately, people telling their personal experiences is not deemed evidence-based. So it's nice that we have the people that are delivering the evidence-based programming. There are people who can then have conversations with the students about their own struggles with addiction. We've also been partnering with Tree Have to do support groups within all the schools. So that's an opportunity for that prevention specialist who has the lived experience to hold support groups with the students. And referral to those support groups really depends on how it's set up within the school, but that's an opportunity for that person to share their experience, strength, and hope, talk about how they've struggled. And then we've done a lot more kind of large-scale meetings in the auditorium where that person who's a prevention specialist can share his or her experience with drugs and alcohol.
So I want to go back to the original question. What I would like to see, okay, not like... What I think would be more effective, if you had someone who was a drug addict, or whatever you want to call it, and they had a life... An evidence-based life experience because they were high on whatever all the... Almost lived their lives. Do you have anyone like that going into every classroom in every school throughout the school year on a personal, almost one-to-one, one-to-thirty, one-to-twenty-four, whatever it is, basis? So that person stands in front of the room, walks around the room, and says, "Kids, this is what I went through, blah, blah, blah." Because doing it in front of an auditorium might as well put up a mood. So if you don't have that, my suggestion is, if you don't get them when you're young, fifth grade, fourth grade, and every grade after that... We had more people die of drug overdoses. This was on my last night on one of the news shows. This past year, that all the people killed in Vietnam War.
Excellent.
One year. And when I say to you, "I know," I taught almost forty years in the New York City school system, they will do anything to get you. Drain them. Okay? So you really got to reach them one-on-one if you can.
I couldn't agree with you more. I can't say with a hundred percent certainty that we're currently doing that because I don't think that we are. One piece that we've talked about heavily through the Suri was the infu... So we have certified recovery specialists who are working up here in Susquehanna County and really in every county within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And they are those people with the lived experience who can work with a student or a family who's struggling. So we're hoping that we can infuse more of those certified recovery specialists into the schools, and they could be the ones having the conversations with all the classrooms about the disease of addiction. This is what my story is. This is how I can help you so that this isn't what happens to you. So we're looking, as we move forward with this school year, to infuse more of those people with the lived experience who can tell their story one-on-one to students in a small setting as opposed to an auditorium. So yeah.
Good, thank you.
Absolutely messaged her. Yes?
I'd like to know, do you know the percentage of those in jail in our county who are there because of drug addiction or drug problems and mental problems?
So I don't know with a hundred percent certainty the percentage. I'm going to guess that it's probably seventy-five percent, if not higher. I'm going to say that that, of the seventy-five percent that I get, I'm guessing, most of them probably struggle with not only a substance use disorder but a co-occurring mental health disorder in some degree. So it's high. It's very high.
Have you found as far as for recovery, what's good for recovery? Is medical cannabis being used more or promoted and to help them in recovery? Or is it just like methadone and Suboxone or any of those things?
So I think there, you know, the use of medicinal marijuana for purposes of someone with an opioid addiction is fairly new. I don't know that we have, as county employees, looked at it as heavily as perhaps we should. The challenge we have is that our funding comes from the state, which comes from the federal government, and there are some barriers to us than advocating in one way for a certain form of medication. I think, you know, I leave it up to the medical professionals to determine what works best for individuals who are struggling. We really are trying to do true level-of-care assessments on individuals and place them in the most appropriate treatment, and then not dictate what that looks like moving forward. So we always think that, you know, the longer someone is involved in treatment, and whatever that looks like can vary per person, the longer they can be involved in active treatment, the better off the outcome is, and the recovery can be going down the road. Medication for someone who's struggling with an opioid use disorder is obviously best practice. We push for medication-assisted treatment in terms of methadone, VivaTral, which is the injectable blocker, and then buprenorphine. I know that we don't have enough research on our end to see what impact medicinal marijuana has on someone struggling with an addiction at this point. But we do have treatment providers who are trying to work with individuals who are on medicinal marijuana, simply because it's being prescribed by a doctor and it seems to be working for them. So at this point, we're not counting anything out.
Thank you, Barbara, for your presentation. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes, yeah.
How are the roads coming along? Are you getting enough funding? And round eleven, I drove recently, and the potholes were so big, you could almost be like a swimming hole. So is that on schedule to be filled?
Yeah, there... You know, we've made a lot of progress on getting potholes filled. A lot of the work has been done as temporary work because there has been so many potholes to fill. They are making progress, actually, one seventy-one from the Mormons facility to the pump and pantry in Great Bend. They're finishing the top coat on that hopefully today or tomorrow. And then they will be going to Route eleven from the state line to New Milford to the Queen of Hearts during that road. At the same time, they've got crews down on Route eleven south of New Milford, working on filling potholes now, trying to get those in. So, yeah, there's progress, but not as much as we had hoped. We'd like to have a lot more. I did put an article on Facebook yesterday. We found out yesterday that they're cutting funding out of our TIP program, which is the Transportation Improvement Plan. It's basically a five-year plan of projects in our communities that are getting done. The state has decided that they need to pull money away from the local projects to put into the interstate. The interstate, they're short like five hundred million dollars to just to maintain the interstate. So they're going to try and squeeze us to take money out of the TIP. I'm already organizing people in the Northern Tier Transportation Authority to push back and not allow them to try and do that and push back to the state. I did put the Secretaries of Transportation in Harrisburg her phone number and email address on my... On the Facebook yesterday, telling everybody to call and share with her that it's ridiculous the roads are in this condition, especially when you can go south and they have roads down there that have no potholes, and they're repaving them just to spend their money before the budget year gets done. And we're struggling so bad up here. The funding formula is horrible that they use. Funding formula for roads is based on population. So you can guess that in this county, you know, because of the population, we don't get a lot of the funding. But where counties down in like York County and Philadelphia, they get a ton of money because of the population. The other issue, of course, we deal with here that they don't deal with in the south is the winters. When we have a bad winter like last year where there's salting and cinderin every day, that eats up... That's all money coming out of the budget to fix the roads. So luckily, we now have Jonathan Fritz, who's the state rep. He is now sitting on the House Transportation Committee. I've been working with him, and he's working on trying to get the formula changed so that there's a winter maintenance budget versus... And then a summer maintenance budget, because the people in Carlisle Mechanics, for sure, don't need as much money to do their winter projects as we do here. So we are seeing some gain there. You know, it's from the inside out now, instead of just trying to push from the outside in. You know, a lot of thanks to all the people that have sent emails to, you know, Rich Roman and Leslie Richards from Pendott for the condition of the roads. People need to keep calling and keep sending emails. And actually, Leslie Richards' phone number is seven one seven seven eight seven five five seven four. And I welcome everybody to call her and tell her that, you know, she was up here for four hours riding the roads and knew that they were horrible. And said that, you know, she was disgraced that the roads are in this bad a condition up here. What's appalling to me is, after she says that, we now are finding out they want to take money out of our budget to move to the interstate. And what even is more upsetting is, as bad as our roads are, the state figures out a way to put over nine hundred million dollars in a rainy day fund in Harrisburg out of the budget. And there's no reason why they can't pull twenty or thirty million out of that, send up here to get these roads fixed. You know, our crews, and again, I have to say this and repeat it over and over again because the first thing everybody wants to say is, "Well, the crews aren't any good." Our crews in this county do an excellent job with the equipment they have to work with. If you go out and look at what they have to work with here versus what they work with in the south, their equipment is old, it's outdated, if they have any equipment at all. If you go south, they have all the modern stuff and all the new stuff. All the junk seems to come to this county. So, I mean, it is very disheartening to the workers that are here. You know, down south, they got to put eight tons of blacktop out in a day. They have all kinds of machines to do it with. Up here, they got to put eight tons of blacktop out to patch roads. They got to do it with a shovel and shovel the whole thing. So, I mean, it's, you know, they don't even get treated the same as the employees in the south. So... But, you know, we need people to keep calling and keep writing and keep the pressure on. That's how it's going to work. You know, I hate to say the squeaky wheel gets the grease, but that's how this thing works. It's how it's always worked. When they know the voters are pissed off at them and that... Oh, I probably shouldn't have said that, but anyway. When they know the voters are upset with them, you know, and it may cost them votes in Harrisburg, you know, then, you know, maybe they... They'll think twice about what they're doing and try and get things done. There was a report, and I want to clear this up, there was a report that came out at seven thirty this morning that the Route eleven project, that the project was going to avoid the towns of Great Bend and New Milford and Halsted, and that the roads are only going to be tarred and chipped. That is totally false. I don't know where it came from, but that information is not accurate. I just talked to the directors before this meeting, and they assured me that it's all subcontracted out. They're going from the state line to the Queen of Hearts in New Milford first. They will mill down at least two inches, so do the base repairs, and they'll top coat it, so we have a decent road again. The second section of that from Queen of Hearts to four ninety-two, and also from just south of what used to be the old summit to Kingsley, will be done next year. They have several pipes they need to get replaced and work they need to get done in the road before they pave it. So they don't want to pave it and then cut it all up and put pipes in like we normally do. So that is on track. It's not a chip and stone. They're not going to avoid the towns. So everything is in place, and we'll keep hoping for that. Any other public comment? Yes?
Do you have any updates on the summit, like what happened there? I heard there was an investigation, how that horrible fire happened.
Yeah, all we know is that, you know, it's under investigation. I think it's still under investigation as far as we know right now. So, of course, that's with the Fire Marshal, and you'd have to contact their offices to find out. Anybody else?
Wheels on wheels. Any progress there?
We are working on it. You know, this is, you know, we're looking at different avenues to try and see how we can shorten the time period. We're working on trying to get a letter together now to go to area of aging and try and get the requests going. The whole process, unfortunately, I mean, this is government at its best. You know, the process that they put in place, the Department of Aging in Harrisburg, it could take a year or longer to get this changed. I mean, to me, it's still despicable that, you know, this county is offered to pay for the additional cost for deliveries on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and the agency out of Tuncanic has refused to help and do anything. of Toncanic has refused to help and do anything. They will do it their way, and they don't care what our county wants or needs. Towanda, sorry. And, you know, unfortunately, as you know, Billy, we've had one lady already pass away, that maybe she still would've passed away, but if somebody had delivered her meal on Tuesday and found her after she had her stroke, she might still be alive today. And so all those board members that sit on that board at the Area Agency on Aging in Towanda should be ashamed of themselves, and one of those people is, is from Representative Pickett's office. I've shared my displeasure with Tina Pickett over that, and that her office is not supported discounting.
I have another question. Got a neighbor, that their neighbor, fortunately, the neighbor's a mile and a half down the road from me. It's elder abuse, and Area Agency in Aging has been out a few times, but they always call ahead of time, so they clean things up, and, and they go on their way, and then the kids back. Now the problem is rats, and they've not only in their house, but they're into the neighboring houses as well.
I would suggest that either you or whoever is making the contact and reporting the elder abuse, skip the Area Agency on Aging, who apparently is incompetent in this, and call the Area of Aging in Harrisburg. I'm sure Mary Ann Warren, she's got most of those numbers, she can probably get those for you, to call them directly and explain to them what's going on, that when it gets reported, they're getting notified before they come out so they can clean the whole place up and, and all of that. I will caution you, though, I had a similar situation in Nicholson where an elderly lady was living in a house that had no heat, no water, no sewer, no, no nothing, actually all the walls of the house was gutted except for one room. There was no electric to the house, nothing. And she had a kerosene heater, and she was living in that room. And we sent several agencies out to try and get her out, get her help, get her someplace, and because she was in the right frame of mind and refused to leave the house, there was nothing anybody could do. And of course, she had probably thirty or forty feral cats running in and out of the house at will.
Sounds similar.
So, but, you know, I just caution you, if, if the person, the elderly person says, "I'm fine, leave me alone," there is nothing anybody can do. So.
Thank you.
Make a couple announcements.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is everybody good?
Yeah, go ahead. No, go ahead, make your announcement.
All right, I just wanna make a couple announcements of things happening. This Saturday evening at four o'clock, going back to the drug and alcohol, there's a group in town, a local grassroots organization called Stop the Stigma, and they're gonna hold an event out here on the green, and all is welcome, the public's welcome. There'll be free hot dogs and hamburgs, they're going to have speakers that are gonna speak to addiction and recovery, people that have lots of blood crimes to it. And there'll be vendors with booths set up such as TreeHab and local counseling agencies and things like that. So they're hoping for a turnout, they did, this is their second year to do it, last year they had about seventy people in attendance. And the whole idea was to reach out to the community and let families that are being affected know that they're not alone, and that they can, there's people they can talk to, people they can reach out to, and to break the stigma, so people will come out of the darkness and into the light and talk about it and not be ashamed of it, because it's touching pretty near every family in our county. So that's happening Saturday night at four o'clock, please come. And then on September 18th, Forest City, six o'clock, at the Historical Society, they've asked for a Lyme program to be put on, so the Susquehanna County Tick-Borne Disease Task Force has contacted PA Lyme, and Michelle from PA Lyme will be doing a forty-five-minute presentation on ticks at six o'clock in Forest City on September 18th.
Really?
The Historical Society. And then, we have one other thing, can we bring up the bench?
Yeah.
Yep. As many of you know, Mrs. Eleanor Karoski worked for the county for thirty years, and her daughter is here today, and the employees that worked with Eleanor for so many years and loved her dearly decided they wanted to do something special for her, so they took up a collection, and they purchased a bluestone bench made by Endless Mountain Stone, and it has been delivered on the green, it was just here a few days before, right after the Blueberry Festival, it was delivered. So today, there's going to be, Stacy Ebley's going to take some pictures with the employees and Mrs. Karoski's daughter. So thank you for being here today, and we all respected and appreciated your mother and, and the service of thirty years that she did for our county.
Anybody got anything else?
Is her picture on the bench?
No, just her name.
Just the name?
Mm-hmm.
I wanted to ask about the program on, in Elk Lake for the CDL licenses for truck driving, how is that coming along since there was about two hundred jobs open in our county needing truck drivers with the gas industry?
First class is already full, and I think the second class is close to being full already.
And how many in the class?
I think it's around fifty.
So fifty?
Yeah.
That's great. And those openings are still there, I assume?
Oh, yeah, and even more now.
And even more than the two hundred?
Right, yeah, well, you know.
Is it all just truck drivers they need, or other things?
Well, they need other things too, but, you know, even as truck drivers, if you don't wanna haul gas, Walmart's asking and looking for drivers like crazy, and they pay, you know, a friend of mine drives for me, he makes about almost ninety thousand a year plus benefits, so.
Yeah, if you don't wanna haul water, I guess, or anything with the gas industry.
Well, most of the gas companies, water or rigs or things like that, they deal with the, that, but, you know, other companies, UPS as well, is, you know, Walmart, that's all freight and commodities, and Mainz is, Mainz actually will give you a big bonus if you go apply and work there, if you've got a license, they need people, and I think they got, they're up to like a seven or ten thousand dollar bonus they'll pay if you come to work for them, so.
Now, do the students have to pay for their class?
It depends, I know that part of it's paid for, but there are, there are programs out there for scholarships and things like that.
You mean at Elk Lake?
At Elk Lake, and I know TreeHab has got stuff too, and workforce development, that they're paying for stuff too, to try and get people. Anything else?
Thank you.
Let me make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you very much. Rob, do I call over to Bob Pemberton?